Okay, good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June sixth. First on our agenda this evening, we have a discussion and direction to increase the urban forest utility fee. Brian? Oh, Frank, we were wondering where you were. We thought maybe you're on vacation and you didn't ask to not be at the meeting.
Good afternoon, Your Honor and State Council. This is discussion and direction to increase the urban forest utility fund. We brought this at the budget discussion back in in January. We brought that there would be a proposal of a fifty cent increase to this utility fund and we said that we would bring back at the time the financial model and the fee proposal. So for the benefit of the public, this is the language for the urban forest fee that's on the screen there. So, next slide. It should be noted that Brian's still in the meeting. So here, you can see the history of the fees that have been associated with the urban forests. There was a five-year gap from fifteen to twenty and there has not been an increase since before the before the derecho storm of August twenty twenty. There was a slight change. There was no change to the pricing but change in how there was clarification in the language to how we actually bill per dwelling for residential and commercial. So the impacts of this increase over a twelve-month period, we would be looking at an increase in the fund revenue of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm going to pass it over to Seth to just talk about some of the increased expenditures that we saw in the fiscal year twenty-four budget for this fund.
Yeah, so a lot of the a lot of the increases for FY twenty-four came came in from overhead, the transferring outs. We weren't essentially funding for some of the billing processes and there is still some overhead costs that we have not taken into account as far as when it comes to finances, HR's time that goes into effect. And then also the equipment reserve. We did a large increase for that as we have obtained large items and those items have gone up significantly in pricing, just to make sure that we have a healthy fund to be able to to be able to replace our equipment needs.
So you can see the net impact there for fiscal year twenty-four even even with this increase. So with this and the other funds, we have been working with DA Davidson on our financial models. So we have been this was performed for the urban forest fund. And so it's worth noting here that the items that Seth had mentioned were in the analysis. There is some future initiatives that are not in this analysis yet because we haven't really gone through the process yet. There's the urban forest reforestation, there's position, potential position and cost analysis. There's also, we have equipment in our replacement fund that we have not allocated really. There's, we haven't done the analysis for having a tree replacement built into that replacement fund. So this model is great, but it doesn't, it still doesn't cover, it's still under development of all of all these other initiatives. So that's just to keep in mind when you're thinking about this net revenue impact. So you can see for fiscal year twenty-four, there's a hundred and twenty-four thousand net revenue impact. And then as the expenditures goes up and the fees stay fairly constant, that's then the net revenue impact will go down in those future years. So this is our fund balance estimates. And again, yes, there is a healthy reserve, but there is still these initiatives that have yet to be developed into this. So we just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. We feel that this cost increase is will be a benefit now to to keep the fund healthy, unfund the future initiatives that I've mentioned. Another one is the compensation study. So.
Brian, just so you know, for the fund balance, the reason for that, over a half a million of those dollars came from grants or from the salvage harvest during derecho. And so those dollars are spoken for for those projects, but have not been foreseen. And we did not budget for those in the revenue or in the expenses yet.
And this does include the urban forest fund plus the urban forest replacement fund as well, these numbers. It's an all-encompassing model. So with that, those are some of the initiatives that I was talking about. I will be open for questions.
Questions?
Okay. So Brian, you you touched on this and and but I wanted to get some clarity. Is in this modeling, is part of the proposal to make this adjustment to three fifty this year and then hold it stable or at that level for several years thereafter? Or is that dependent upon clarification of future funding needs and then subsequently reevaluation of this model?
If I can, I'll answer that, Councilman. This, the three fifty is for this year as part of this effort with the models that we are building. The expectation is that we will update those and use that as analysis every year as we're building, we're constructing the budget to make sure that it is updated and fresh. The important thing to note with the urban forestry fund, just like the recycling or the sewer fund is it is a utility fund. So it is, it should be self-sustaining and not supported by property taxes. So the recommendation is the three fifty for this year. And then we would continue to analyze it year after year after year as part of the budget process and show this model as part of that budget cycle to justify any sort of recommendation in the future.
So so that analysis would then also include, can we continue to operate within the three dollars and fifty cents given emergent needs?
Correct. So if, yeah, so as part of the budget process that we've started for FY twenty-five, we've, we're in the process of kicking that off here soon. If we go through and analyze that and make sure that we've we've accounted for all those needs and and that three fifty still covers equipment reserve, the the cost of personnel, the utilities and all the other things that go into that fund, then yes, the the recommendation would keep it status quo. But as a utility fund, we want to make sure that we are covering those expenses currently, but also contemplate it in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. And number one, I think the increase makes sense. I think the citizens understand this arena better since the derecho and understand that some investment needs to be made. We've talked a number of times on how reserves need to be built up to proper levels. And if you look at the history of of past increases, I mean, we've increased it a dollar and a quarter, a dollar and a quarter in eight years, with the majority of that coming in just the last couple of years. So we went a long period of time without doing anything, which was probably not the right thing. So I think as we continue to go forward, organizations need to be looking at that on an annual basis and not have these big gaps. And all of a sudden you have a big adjustment. So I think smaller adjustments make a whole lot more sense as we continue to go forward and be justifiable on a on a year-by-year basis. So I think the path we're doing, the manner in how we're doing it right now, makes a lot of sense to me.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. Just one other comment that Leon and I had talked about in preparation for tonight, and that is our team working with DA Davidson has been going through and building these models with DA Davidson for each of our funds. You've seen a sanitary sewer fund. You're seeing this. I think you've seen one other fund. The goal is to either July or August have the the general fund completed now that we have the the property tax reform that has been done, being able to insert that as best as we can to start running those models. So we anticipate August at the latest that you would see that. So once you have that, then you will have all of the models for all of the funds, which will provide us with that complete picture. And then once we have that, again, then it becomes standardized every year as we go through that budget process. So we're, we've got data to support those recommendations as we're coming along. And so just after that, you will be seeing the sewer fund on the solid waste fund as part of the public service facility next, as part of the financing next meeting.
Anyone else? Anything else, Brian? Okay, thank you. Next is our discussion regarding building a fire plan review process and fire department fee schedule. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council. So staff's bringing back the plan review process for discussion, seeking direction to move forward with an updated process and proposed changes to the fire department fees as well. This aligns with the strategic plan, effective and efficient government focus area two, along with goal area two capitalize on new and existing operational strategies to maximize opportunities and reduce risk. This first slide is is basically a copy of a slide that we presented in March that we're moving forward with a new process with the plan review process. We brought a third-party plan review concept to council in January to assist with the staffing shortage, but also as a program enhancement. It was approved as an emergency purchase at that time. We communicated, met with chamber, medco and city departments on proposed third-party outsourcing and the fire protection plan reviews. They thought that was in favor of the development community and the turnaround times of those reviews would keep development, construction going quicker. Budget proposal and approval of sixty thousand dollars. This is supposed to begin July one, twenty twenty-three was approved as a pass-through fee to support this third-party review process. I'll explain a little bit about that moving into the next slides as we move forward. But we've also communicated with Lund Fire Protection on how others utilize their service. Nearly all of their clients use the service as a separate contact and not a pass-through of the city, some of which are comparables. And I'll talk about some of those moving forward as well. So the city hosted a contractor development informative breakfast session on March twenty-third for upcoming changes to the process. Comments received by the fire department that morning were in favor of this process. And the turnaround times of the reviews being ten business days, some contractors commented that it is even much faster than what even the time we do it is three three times faster than what we can do it than the Bureau. But they say some departments in other cities are even longer than that. So they were in favor of this process. We also conducted a previous exercise with planning and building on plans and middle process with Kansas Contractor Tom. And it allowed us to see some areas of improvement in where we could narrow the time of submittal processes and things for the applicants and the developers as well. So progressing ahead with goals and improvements to the submittal permitting process and plan reviews, our team would like to do the following. Implement a more efficient process for the customer to submit plans and pay for permits, optimizing construction project times. And they can do this quicker at their first meeting. We met with Dave, Gary and Kim on May twenty-third to verify the improvements with the intent to begin July one. We developed a more streamlined process of submittal of plans and payments of permits. All construction permits can be paid upon initial review of the building plans rather than multiple visits of payments and permit pulling. Today, we had an exercise with Gary and Amma at a building and Tracy and Sean the fire and pulled Rachel in as well to ensure that in the trial portion of New World that this system will work the way we're intending. And we proved today that it did, that it will. As stated previously, I discussed the process with Lund Fire Protection as far as how the third party works. We're proposing now no more pass-through fee with the city and extra administrative steps as proposed in the budget. The fire department will provide a link and direction of the contractors immediately upon their submittal to submit plans and payments directly to Lund Fire as other communities do. Which brings me back to some of the communities that use Lund Fire Protection. Some of those are Cedar Falls, Clyde, Indianola, North Liberty, Norwalk, Waterloo, Waukegan, West Des Moines. So some of them are are comparables as well. Checked with other comparable cities and organizations and the chart is in the packet. It's a pretty healthy chart. I didn't want to put that on the screen today. But you've had access to that and either the departments have similar fees or have outsourced a plan review to the fire protection systems themselves. So this shows the proposed fee structure that the fire department is proposing moving forward. Our goal is to be somewhere in the middle with our comparables. We are on the lower end of the spectrum overall. That's because some fee areas are higher, where more equal or lower than others. And if you look at that packet, you see where there's a bunch of fees in there. So when you looked at all of them comparatively, we're still on the lower end of the spectrum as far as fees, but we're still not the lowest nor the highest. Some comps do not have fees because they're integrated with their building department. And so they don't have a specific fire department fee schedule. One thing I'd like to point out on here specific to this process, you'll notice in the sprinkler current versus the proposed, we're proposing square footage. That's a key portion of this simplified submittal process because when we get the initial building plan review, we can base it off square footage and know whether or not it's going to need sprinklers or alarms. And then that's when they get their building construction permit, they can pay for those fees for the sprinkler alarm as well. So they don't have to make their own visits and additional plan submittals through the city. It'll just be a one-stop. They can pay for those upfront. We're looking for direction to move forward with the proposed process and the fee schedule will be integrated with finance. As Brian said, the proposed fees will be coming in July twenty, or June twenty-second, sorry. But the finance will have that in there, fee schedule coming next meeting. Any questions?
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian?
I don't have a question. I just, I I just want to just take this opportunity and just, this is a follow-up that you'll see more of as it relates to fees, user fees. There's a cost of doing business with the city. And if somebody is coming in to get a a permit or inspection for these or other types of services that the city uses, if the fees are not adjusted accordingly, then more of the property taxes are subsidizing those users acquiring the services from the city. That makes sense. So if you recall from the budget process, we said, one of the action items we would do is systematically go through our fee schedule to make sure that those are updated. We've got our 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 building fees and our our engineering fees are twelve to fifteen years old. And so when we look at our comparables, we are way low, which means that property taxes are subsidizing those services. So you will be seeing more of these and over the next couple of months as we systematically go through and and bring forward those recommendations.
That makes complete sense. Thank you for all your work. Okay, Chief Fagan is next. With the community-driven strategic plan discussion.
Before I begin on this, I do want to thank the team that really came together on that process improvement for the plan review process. It was many departments working together to optimize that for our community and our business environment. So very excited to see how that continues to develop, but I think it's a good process improvement as we move forward. So, good afternoon. Here to, very excited to share with you our our community-driven strategic plan. And we've got a lot of neat things to show you in this presentation about the details of that. So if you remember back in December of twenty-two, this project was approved by you. This was something that I brought forward as a part of an action plan of several items that we wanted to move forward. And one of the things that we're very excited is that we're seeing progress on several of those action items, as you'll see on the screen, and completion of a few of them, including this community-driven strategic planning process. So this strategic plan at the department level is dovetailed into the city's strategic plan. And so what you see on the screen is both the city of Marion's strategic plan and then the cover page of our new strategic plan. Our strategic plan at the department level really ties into two key focus areas of the city's strategic plan, both Safe Community and Team Marion. You'll see four goals listed there. Those goals are a part of the city's strategic plan. But when we start to dive into the department level over the next several slides, it all is contiguous with the city's corporate strategy. So the process began with a community meeting of thirty-four stakeholders, including community residents, businesses, healthcare representatives, professional partners, academic institutions and city council. Information was collected to include expectations, area of concerns, things the department should change and things the department should not change. Additionally, community stakeholders completed a program prioritization exercise to inform the department for the future to ensure its focus on resource allocation. After the community meeting, a three-day workshop was facilitated with sixteen of our department employees representing all ranks and tenure to review the community stakeholder feedback. The workshop involved an environmental scan from our employees' perspectives, including strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results, or SOAR. This exercise is to help us broadly understand the current factors impacting our department. The process was engaging and intense at times, but the outcome was well worth it. I'm proud to share our new mission and value statement with you this afternoon. You'll find purposeful language in our mission and values and vision tied to community ownership. And I'm not one to normally read directly from the slide, but there's a few slides this afternoon that I am going to read directly, given the value and the gravity of some of these guiding documents. But I'm going to read our our mission and value statement. The Marion Fire Department takes pride in ownership and serving our community by protecting life and property through rapid response, community risk reduction and emergency preparedness. The Marion Fire Department values service for the betterment of our community through professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication and excellence. Six strategic goals were identified as part of our work along with objectives and critical tasks for each goal, which are documented in our management tool, the Management Implementation Guide, which is also included in your packet. I will go through each one of these strategic goal statements for you. The first is to identify and formalize the scope and level of services provided by the department to meet community expectations and support organizational planning. Enhance external relationships through education, joint training, improved communication, the development of agreements and partnerships, and engagement to increase community safety and unified operations. Develop a staffing model that recruits and retains appropriate personnel and creates a pathway for professional member member growth that aligns with community and department needs. Enhance firefighter health and wellness by continuing and implementing new wellness initiatives resulting in a physically and mentally prepared workforce. Develop a community risk reduction program that identifies and creates partnerships, analyzes data, educates the public and enforces the fire code to improve overall community safety. Prepare for, pursue and achieve, maintain international accreditation to better serve our community and embrace the continuous improvement model. Lastly, our department developed a mission state, a vision statement, excuse me, of where our organization will be in the future. This visualization is powerful and is vital to our success as a team and in serving our community. And I'm proud to share this vision with you. The vision for the Marion Fire Department by twenty twenty-eight is to be a leader in emergency services recognized through the achievement of accreditation by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. Our department will be an attractive organization, providing quality services with an effectively staffed and trained team. We will leverage technology and community partnerships to maximize our commitment to community risk reduction and emergency preparedness. An enhanced focus on health and safety programs will improve the quality of life for our community and workforce. Through these efforts, we will deliver on the community promise to be the best place in Iowa to raise a family and grow a business. Welcome. Any questions that you have about the process and next steps?
Questions?
Yeah, there was a lot of information there to get through. So I've been through it once. Obviously, I'm going to have to go through it again to understand more about it. One interesting concept or idea that that I recall and I wrote down in my notes here that you mentioned was now we have three fire stations. And the idea was put in there somewhere, talking about, well, maybe we need locations more not just for firefighting, but for medical response calls. That's a completely different situation, especially since eighty-five percent of your calls are medical-related calls. So is that something that is going to be looked at more? Because when we talk about adding new locations, obviously, if every location is for firefighting, you're adding another few million dollars of equipment. If it's for medical calls, that's a completely different location. So is that something that's going to be evaluated more in the future? I thought it was an interesting concept that was mentioned in your in your plan.
Yes, so the the strategic initiative of, and one of them I shared with you, is to identify and formalize the scope and level of services provided by the department. We're an all-hazards department. And so the way that we respond to employees for any risk, whether it's fire, EMS, as you mentioned, technical rescue or hazardous materials. And our our workforce is designed to provide the best level of service, given those, each one of those risks. So that strategic initiative is is overwhelmingly going to identify what that is as we work through management channels and with you, for example, ambulances. Is ambulance is something that we want to investigate and learn more about for the city of Marion? That is something that was in the strategic plan as well from our community feedback. And so if that is something that we're going to pursue, we're going to need to investigate and learn more about what are all of the the things that are going to need to come with that as a provision? Because if we're going to provide that to our community, we're going to provide it to the best level of service possible. So absolutely, that strategic initiative that I've mentioned, identify scope and level of service, we'll get into that more specifically. To take that to the next step, going into the process of pursuing accreditation clearly formalizes program evaluation for everything we do on a regular basis. And so we're going to be entering into a model. Right now, we're really starting to just crawl into some of these concepts that are tied to that. But as we mature in that space more, there will be much more data, much more analysis, much more intelligence to guide us on what our next steps should be.
Okay, thanks, Chief. How common is it that the community would be involved in developing the strategic plan? Is that a common thing? I mean, I like the concept. I'm just curious how common it is.
For fire departments, I believe it's very uncommon for a department, fire department strategic plan to be in place. Generally, you don't see that other than for accredited agencies because it is a requirement of them to have that plan. But to take it a step further, to have it community-driven makes it that much more rare. But I would say.
I think it's commendable. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions so far? Okay.
Right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I thought there was more, so.
Oh, no.
All right. Thank you very much, chief. All right, our next item is a presentation regarding ADA transition plan. Greg, hello. We, is this your, this your first time presenting the council? So welcome.
I'm Greg Anis. I'm a project engineer for the city of Marion. I'm giving a brief presentation on the update to the American with Disabilities Act, or ADA Transition Plan for the city of Marion. We update the ADA Transition Plan every five years to reflect the progress of constructing compliant sidewalk ramps in the city. The transition plan is a self-evaluation by the public entity to create an inventory of deficiencies and a plan to move forward to reconcile those deficiencies in, uh, facilities throughout the city. The transition, transition plan is not approved once and for all, but monitored and updated periodically. And we follow the best management practices and do it every five years. The city of Marion ADA Transition Plan was created and approved by council in twenty thirteen. Originally, aerial photography was used to, um, categorize these ramps in three categories. One, non-compliant, does not include detectable warnings, and slopes are out of compliance. Uh, two, partially compliant, detectable warnings are present, but further research was going to be needed by staff to approve the slopes. And then compliant, um, slopes are compliant when constructed and tech warnings are present. These are mostly ramps built after twenty-ten, so not many. Fast forward to the present, the partial ramps were deemed compliant or not compliant by staff. Uh, but still, the city of Marion constructed over a thousand compliant ramps in this time. Uh, these were installed with capital improvement projects, new development and reconstructing existing sidewalk ramps. The main tool for reconstructing, reconstructing those existing sidewalk ramps is Sidewalk Ramp Project. You can see the funding in this slide. Assuming no change in specifications or regulations, uh, the current rate of improving accessibility, it would take thirty-one years for the city of Marion to replace all non-compliant sidewalk ramps. Uh, in twenty thirteen, using a similar projection, uh, we were at forty-three years for bringing sidewalk ramps into compliance, so we shaved off roughly three years in that ten-year time. This shows the progress continuously made in the previous ten years and in the transition plan. It also shows the city of Marion's commitment to creating a vibrant community, a community that is accessible for all community members and visitors. That's the first goal in the strategic plan. Uh, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
So, um, Greg, uh, thanks for sort of level setting us on, on the progress. I, I, I'm kind of curious about the regulatory base. Does, do the regulations contemplate a time that you have effectively reached at or near a hundred percent compliance? Or is it always a basis of, uh, taking meaningful effort to achieve compliance?
So right now, the regulations that we follow are the proposed right-of-way accessibility guidelines. So right now, between, for example, a blind person that wants to know that they're leaving the safety of the sidewalk and entering the street, they have to have the dome so they can feel that. Someone that's in a wheelchair, those domes actually hurt. So they still haven't got agreement at the Department of Justice on what to even do.
Okay.
So right now, we are still doing proposed guidelines, but we, that's the latest and greatest. They haven't changed it since then. This is something that's very important that we follow up and do this, because if we were not, it'd be like Cedar Rapids and the DOJ comes in there and tells you, you're going to spend all your road use funds on ramps until you are one hundred percent.
So I get, that, uh, maybe to restate what was really in my mind, is there anything in the regulatory basis that causes you to have to make a defined amount of incremental progress to full compliance? Or is it, 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 they don't measure that?
They don't measure it. As long as you're making a reasonable.
Okay, got it. Okay.
We have, if we have a policy, we follow the policy. We have to show proof of following that policy, just like sidewalk inspection or sewer, sewer inspection.
And, and Greg's managing an integrated plan to do the best that we can. Okay. Got it.
I'm trying to not duplicate because I think I was on the same thought, um, process that Grant was. When I'm looking at this and how you, how you, can we ever get caught up was really where I was going. And how often does the plans change? And if you get so far and then they change it, and then you have a whole bunch drop off and suddenly you're but non-compliant? Or do they grandfather in some if they do change those rules?
So the other fun thing is, is when we do, say, a DOT project and they come in to the inspection, they say, measure it before you accept the project and never measure that ramp again. You've got to remember, we live in Iowa and things move. So if you recall, when we built, um, the Thomas Park Safe Room, that used to be a voting location, but that ramp that snakes down to the safe room, that is no longer ADA accessible because the sidewalks have shifted. So you have that component as well, because we have frost heave.
So some things are, some of it is, in this process, some of it, I'm, is like, um, this is way out of compliance. This is an old system. We need to like completely bring that up to speed. And you have the ones that because of changes maybe have become non-compliant that were before.
Yeah, so we try not to design to the extreme. There's limits, minimums and maximums, and we try and design somewhere in the middle. But sometimes you have some restrictions where you, you have to design towards that limit. And sometimes things just shift quite a bit with ground temperature changes.
Sure. And then how do, this is probably part of our policy. How do you, how is it determined? Is it because of redo, are things redone as part of redevelopment, like these streets, everything that goes on? Or is it, there's a budgeted amount and you find the priority intersections each year that have to be fixed?
Or is it? We have some that are marked as dangerous. You know, we've got a complaint that the dome's falling apart or something. A lot of it has to follow our HMA project. So when we do the HMA project, all those have to come into compliance and rather than pay, Pelling, who is more an asphalt company versus a concrete company, we typically follow that project and do that. And we try and do a full intersection at once, rather than just do one panel here, one across town. So that's a little bit of engineering judgment as well.
Interesting. Okay. Thanks for all you're doing on that. It's, seems like it's just a month. We just keep trying to find.
And just like roads, the sidewalks, the, the ramps, the curbs were never, ever going to be caught up. It's just because of the season, wear and tear, just the, the size of our community to get to everything. It's, I mean, it's just got to be cyclical.
Next is our agenda review. First items that are marked for discussion by staff are at the bottom of page four. Uh, page two of the agenda. Any, anything for discussion prior to those items? Any questions? All right, we'll go on to, well, then we'll do A six. This is city manager.
Thank you, your honor. This item, uh, Kim has been managing on our staff. She had an event that she was going to, so I'm taking this over. We, the natural gas utility was deregulated, allows us to get a third-party supplier. We've had a third-party supplier for quite a while. We have identified a different, uh, supplier, Wood River Energy, that, um, has more competitive rates. We did share this with the subcommittee, the council subcommittee as a recommendation from staff. Doesn't, the, the benefit of this is the program would save approximately fourteen thousand dollars a year.
Any questions on that? Okay, the next item is A seven. You Brian?
Yes, um, this is to, excuse me. So this is to amend, uh, the current agreement with Title Basin, who are, they are our consultants for our aderential claim with FEMA. So as you're all probably aware, we are still working through some of the projects, um, with FEMA. So this is simply to extend their contract through the end or through November of twenty-twenty-four. So there's no adjustments to any of their contracted rates or anything. It's just purely a timing thing because of FEMA's process. And, um, yeah, so, and it's, um, so it's also worth noting that this is also, um, one hundred percent reimbursable by FEMA.
Okay, questions? All right. Thank you. So the next item is A ten.
So this is to actually, um, close out our, to, um, to allocate the remainder of the funds um, for our low to moderate income portion of the Winslow Road Urban Renewal Area. So you may recall in the past, we have paid for some projects out of this. We did, um, allocate some ARPA funding to, um, to Marion Cares. So we are actually removing the competitive grant program from the original allocation, since we did allocate money to Marion Cares. I mean, this just allocates the remainder of the funds for the civil rights grant program. So. Do you have any questions about that?
Questions? Yeah, go ahead.
More of a, I don't know if it's a question per se, but I really think that we should, as a city, do more for, uh, housing grants to help with lower income, median income families to our individuals to be able to get some grant assistance for homeownership. I know we have a little bit. There's potentially some money that could be coming from the state to help with this too. But I really think that it's something that the city should look oriented to, to help out our residents. Actually, I do have a question. And so Civilized Low to Moderate Income Housing Assistance Grant, can that be explained exactly what that is? By whoever.
There's a grant program that our Civil Rights Commission manages and has managed for several years. It was funded through, so under state law, when you establish a residential TIF, you have to set aside a certain amount of the TIF increment to fund low to moderate income grant, a, a grant program. So the, the increment is what is funding the grant program that then is administered by the Civil Rights Commission to not-for-profits like Marion Cares. So they put out an annual call for grant, grant applications to, to assist, provide assistance to those, those populations that, that are in need. The, I think we talked about this a couple of meetings ago when we were going through the ARPA allocation. This, this fund has now been, we've, we've eliminated all of that increment. So it, it, there's no longer a revenue source to come in and supply that, that civil rights grant program because this LMI program is, is, we've depleted all those funds.
Funds could become available in the future, sorry.
We have, we have voted to have a program through the ARPA, with the ARPA funds.
Correct. And that, that would be, the ARPA funds would be for, as long as we have those, we, we do have a timeframe to spend that. We also do have, uh, there is a development that we've been talking with the developer about possibly establishing a residential TIF as part of that development. So if that does come through to fruition, then we would have another funding, funding stream for, to continue this, this grant.
So is this grant, I'm sorry, does this grant go to individuals or does this grant go towards nonprofits?
I know nonprofits. I do not know off the top of my head about individuals. We can do that research and have that for you on Thursday.
That's more of what I'm going towards. Is it something to go towards individuals versus going to nonprofits? But the, the, what the mayor said too with the ARPA money, I, I thought that was going, or that was reallocated to Marion Cares.
We, we, we established it to, to satisfy what was being administered through the civil rights grant application. Yes.
So I, I'm just looking at this resolution twenty-eight, fourth thirty-four that's in our packet. And I just, so the value of the amendment that's being proposed is that sixty-three thousand dollars?
Yes.
A reduction, a reduction of sixty-three?
So it's just a reallocation. So because there was the ARPA funds allocated, this is just allocating that portion that was due to be given to Marion Cares. They had the ARPA money. This is just, um, using those, um, uh, dollars, remaining dollars. Um, and it's all, I mean, this is, uh, this is approximations because with tax increment financing, um, you know, we're just trying our best to, to balance out, to close that requirement by the state. So that is a reallocation and an approximation of the dollars that are left for low to moderate income for this urban renewal area.
So, so in, in the, um, in the memo, uh, we're acknowledging that we had sixty thousand of ARPA funds to Marion's cares for rent and utility assistance uh, and working with Lynn County on a housing rehab program. That money stays.
So.
I guess I'm a little confused in terms of the, the accounting of what's going where and why.
So we, so we gave Lake County, Leanne is watching at home messaging. So we gave Lynn County Housing Trust Fund forty-five thousand out of the LMI. Because under state law, when you have the residential TIF, there's only certain, there are certain things that become eligible under law that we can allocate that towards. So Lynn County Housing Trust, forty-five thousand out of the LMI, the grant program. This is for the remainder of what's in the Winslow Road. There wasn't even sixty thousand left in the, sixty-three thousand left in the fund. So we're correcting this, closing it out. We have, uh, because the, the, the fund has been depleted, the, the increment is no longer there.
Okay, so I'm, I'm following that. I'm trying to manage, I'm trying to see the buckets of money here. So then by take, using the money from the TIF, I understand that bucket, does that free up the dollars that were coming out of the ARPA fund going to Marion Cares? Is that now available for other housing uses?
No, the, so the, the, the LMI from the TIF, you had a pot of money and you spend it down. So we've gotten to this point where it's, it's no longer. So to, to bridge the gap for this year, that, the, the ARPA funds has to, to supplement because we don't have enough in the LMI fund to cover that cost. So.
So there's not any money coming out of the TIF?
Correct. So this is, this is the procedural, this is the procedure that has to be done to close that up. We'll, we'll have a, we'll have a summary of that accounting for Thursday.
That'd be great.
The, the, what Rachel has on her screen here, the LMI grant program that was proposed and, and approved by council for the ARPA is fifty thousand. So the fifty thousand from ARPA funds would go towards this civil rights program. Sorry?
So that did go away, the ARPA grant funding towards individuals?
The civil rights program, I don't know about individual, but to Marion Cares, I know that. I don't know the question of if it goes to individuals from the ARPA. That's the, that's a clarifying question I need to follow up on. So we will, we will, Councilman Brandt, we will answer the question about if the art, if the, the, the LMI, the, the civil rights grant program goes directly to individuals. So that's the question. And then we'll have the accounting, we'll have the accounting from the Winslow Road Urban Renewer TIF, the residential TIF. The residential TIF.
My recollection is it's not individuals, it's organizations that serve individuals. The grant program, that the Civil Rights Commission's grant program. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, the uh next items that are marked are on the last page. Uh, any questions on any item prior to those two items on the last page?
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
E four, it was the traffic advisory.
Committee, yeah.
For the uh school for first and third avenue, first street, third avenue. So putting in, obviously, Tac was um saying, yes, make it a three-way stop. But in the memos that. When I was reading it, at some point in there, it talked about not doing it until the school's built. Are you putting, are these saying to put in the stop signs now?
No, it'll, we'll delay them just like.
It'll still be delayed, okay, okay. It just, the the resolutions didn't say anything about putting, deferring them till then and just.
Yeah, so basically, public services will just put it on their work program so that it's done before.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Grant. Yeah, this is uh in the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention, item B one. Uh, I think Ryan, this is in your neighborhood, uh, it's regarding the precast. Payment. So it's B one resolution approving partial payment to mid-states concrete. Uh, for precast package, public services maintenance facility. It, does that, is this different than the storage facilities that we have been paying heretofore?
This is actually paying on the contract for the installation, so.
Okay.
When you're out there, you saw some of the precast getting installed, you're actually paying for the installation.
Okay, that's installation, okay, that just wanted to sift between storage versus install.
Thanks.
Hey, any other questions prior to F eight on the last page? Okay, F eight, Dave? And F nine?
I'm gonna come combine the next two resolutions into one, they're very much related, it'll just be a little easier to present that way. Um, so the applicants are seeking approval of the uh Sycamore Heights second edition Plumery Platt and the Plumery Site Development Plan highlighted there on the screen. It's just east of the uh, the new intermediate school of Lynnmore off Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Poses one hundred and thirty-eight units on uh, it's a little, it's actually over sixteen, eight and a half acres of ground, I forgot to include the right-of-way in that calculation. Uh, but they're proposing a mix of uh four-unit and two-unit uh townhomes duplexes. I might use duplexes and townhomes interchangeably a little bit, but it's the essentially the same thing. Uh, it'll be served off a series of public streets and alleys, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, and uh, just going forward, it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Last month. Uh, so this area is located in the neighborhood of Indian Creek. Several, you were on the commission at the time when we did the readoption in twenty nineteen, uh, this is the very specific design standards. Uh, for this general area north of Thirty-Fifth and east, or north of Thirty-Fifth Avenue, east of Thirty-Fifth Street. Uh, very specific on designs from what the building's gonna look like, streets are gonna look like, parks are gonna look like, lighting, signage. Uh, you name it, it's kind of got a regulation there to it. Uh, so this is really the first development within that, there is a link in the staff report if you would like to go back and re-review uh that twenty-page document. So overall, the whole site is zone plan unit development, uh, but with that planned unit development, there's. Uh, kind of its own unique zoning within that level, uh, there's actually four different districts, and to get it right, it is neighborhood mixed use. Multi-family unit, urban residential, and open space. Uh, the subject property we're looking at tonight is urban residential, so it allows a wide range of residential uses from single family all the way to townhomes. Uh, as long as it gets under that eight units per acre, goes over eight units an acre, it gets into uh multifamily status. So looking at the Plumery Platt, the first item on the agenda, um, Forty-Fourth Street is to the. There we go, Forty-Fourth Street here is to the east, the page is laid outside, Thirty-Fifth Avenue is along the south. There, and Forty-Fourth Street obviously continues south, uh, all the way down to Twenty-First Avenue and beyond. Um, so we can see it's a quite a large development, um, all accesses will be off Thirty-Fifth and Forty-Fourth Street. Utilities are all present to the site, we are getting the extension of a high-pressure water main uh to the site from the. Uh, from the east, this came up on the previous phase of this development to the east, Todd had some concerns just regarding water pressure. Enough pressure will be there, but might not meet the customer satisfaction of getting a nice uh hot shower with good pressure. Uh, so they're gonna install that uh high-pressure line, uh, that will alleviate all the water department's concerns. Um, look at the lines, um, the two red lines on the image, those are public streets. Uh, there'll be uh parking on one side of those streets, the blue lines, a little harder to see. Around the, whoops, on the outside there kind of, and through the middle there, those are gonna be public alleys. They're all twenty feet wide, except at areas around the um. The fire hydrants, uh, those are at twenty-six feet wide, and that's just to accommodate two-way traffic for emergency response vehicles, they have to be at twenty-six foot wide. Because they are public alleys, uh, the police can enforce no parking. If these are private alleys, it's a little more difficult to actually go out and ticket, tow, et cetera, but as public streets, public alleyways. Uh, we can go and enforce the no parking on both sides of those alleyways. Uh, we're going to design here in a little bit on the next phase, uh, there's tension. The tension basin is a bioswale along Forty-Fourth Street. Bioswale is very similar to Thirty-Fifth Avenue, and then they'll go into two traditional tension basins along Thirty-Fifth Avenue. Uh, a little confusion, the staff reported, did say they're proposing public, they will have to be privately owned. Uh, based on previous comments the council's made regarding attention basins uh going forward, uh, that'll all be can. Maintain and owned by uh an association going forward, um, but the basins. Are, should be adequate to handle everything, we don't have the final calculations until we get a final plat, uh, but they'll be all sized accordingly. Uh, the final element I wanted to point out is there's quite a bit of parking, that was the biggest issue coming out of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's just where do you park? Uh, because there's no parking in the alleyways, and that's where the garages are at, uh, so they created a series of parking lots. Um, in some areas less, less used and around some of the facilities, uh, some open space uh near some park that they're planning on putting in. As well as near to a dog park on the site as well, a dog park in this location. And then just a playground parking, playground open space area in this location, uh, then we'll have some additional parking, it took away a few units. Provide a little bit more additional parking, each unit will have four parking spots, two in the garage, two in the driveway. Uh, so there's more than, there should be more than enough, but you don't really accommodate for that guest parking in that area. Uh, so they created the additional parking uh based on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. The one item I do want to point out with private alleys at twenty feet wide, public service has indicated. They they do take care of the snow in those areas, but there will be a lot of snow, there's not a lot of places to store it once you get all the driveways in, so. The HOA will have a responsibility, of course, to clear the driveways and they may have to find, get creative with snow storage and removal uh from the site. Uh, just again, based on number of driveways, just not a lot of place to push the snow. And the developer, the HOA will be responsible for all the parking lots. Uh, moving on to Plumery Site Development Plan, uh, this is where we drill into a lot more detail of what is it gonna look like? The Plumery Platt, the streets, sewer, water, et cetera, and creation of lots, this is, this is gonna get into the actual design. Uh, you can see quite a few different colors on the map, and they all represent a different type of of housing product, I'm gonna go quickly through those. Oh, should start, color board, um, the developer's gonna be, these are not just one option, take it or leave it, these are all the options. That'll be available for all these units, it avoids the ten shades of tan that we see in development, so it's trying to create some variety of housing. A color change is something that is required as part of the uh design standards for this neighborhood, so you can see the seven different options, this will all be. Will not be vinyl, will be the uh. The LP siding, that's that compressed wood siding, it's kind of comes pre-stained, so it's no vinyl on this development. So a mix of stone, colors, et cetera. So when you look at these renderings, please, they're all one color rendering, obviously, but there's a lot of options available. Uh, so the first housing option is the duplexes, uh, that's highlighted in that red area, there's two types, uh, the one without the front porch and the one with the front porch. Uh, just to provide the variety, this is all required as part of the uh development standards, twenty-seven buildings for fifty-four total units. Uh, these duplexes are pretty similar to the next one, we'll see which is the four, four-unit townplex, four-unit townhouse. Again, variety of colors and options are available within this, the color board that we previously looked at. As we move on, this is the two-story townhouse, these are four units, uh, again, highlighted in the red location areas, front and back elevation. Uh, these are pretty similar to the duplexes we just saw, uh, but in a fourplex formation, nine buildings for thirty-six total residential units. And then we have the three-story townhouse, uh, another, another four-unit building, there's twelve of those for forty-eight total units. Uh, four units per building, uh, this is a, again, it kind of projects as a. Could project as a three-story from the front of the road, just depending on elevations, with the drive-in or garage on the backside. So when we go back and we look at the whole development as a whole, uh, the public will not see. The 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 garages and driveways, these are all serviced off the alley, so when you're looking at the homes on the public streets. You're gonna see the front door, foundations of the home, uh, as opposed to the garage doors, which you'd see in more traditional development that we've seen uh throughout Marion. So again, the Plans and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, um, at their May meeting. Uh, we've worked on this project for close to six months, and it went to the Plans and Zoning Commission a couple of times. Working through just some of the concerns that the developer had, staff had, and commission had. And uh, they finally, they got back with us with a plan that uh, with the Plan and Zoning Commission's concerns, and again, recommended. Sure, there's questions?
Sarah?
This is a little, I keep tilting my head.
Yeah.
If I'm looking at the map, so this is turned, right, so Forty-Fourth is. This, if I turn this, if I'm looking at how it'll sit, it actually sits, it's long and narrow, not across.
Correct, the red dot is north.
Through me for a minute.
It, there was a lot of people, yes.
Okay, so I had to get my bearings as I'm doing this and looking at my material. Um, I like, just a side note, um, we talked a lot about this back in our walkable communities. Well-being days, I'll put that hat on, that um, people like to walk on streets where they can see, they don't see a garage. They feel, they feel it's more friendly, or they, and to be able to walk past front doors and not have garages. Um, so I appreciate that they're looking at a different layout, um. Is this similar, are these designs similar to any other properties in the community?
Um, the the closest it would be to, I'm sorry, there's two projects probably, the the best one I can think of would be off of. Uh, right off Highway thirteen is the Platinum Project, it's prairie. Ridge, rail hill, avenue. They have some home, it's it's kind of hidden behind a little bit of retain wall, but they're, they're multiple, each unit has kind of its own unique color. You see the front doors, probably about fifteen feet off the sidewalk, so it's very kind of traditional, neo-traditional development, and the garages are in the back. The other one would be the one we just saw, last month was Yorkshire Development, that one that was being replanted. Those are all single-family homes, but it was all about servicing from the back, um, but the garages. The biggest difference is, these are public streets versus a private, and an HOA will be formed, and hopefully we'll not have the issues that one had.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, Rookwood, I'm sorry, yeah, the newest one, Rookwood would be Chad Pelley's project, East of Thirteen is another great example, he has a lot of uh fourplexes as well that are probably very similar.
Great, go ahead. Yeah, so um. I grew up in an area in Minneapolis that had alleyways, so, and I know that we've got these in our more modern developments in town. Just a couple of confirming questions here, will those alleyways? Use permit transit of emergency vehicles of all types?
Yeah, with the, with the twenty-foot, no parking, that can be accommodated, and then having a twenty-six foot wide by the uh length plus some of the largest apparatus we have. So you have a twenty-six by seventy-five, eighty feet areas around the fire hydrant, so height, so two trucks could pull up side by side on those.
Okay, in our, are the alleyways going to be lit at night?
Not know the answer, I'll find out.
Okay, I, that I'd like to have a clarification on for Thursday. Um, the only other thing that, and I remember when we considered this development originally. You know, snow removal and um, and uh, traffic passage during the winter months. Uh, was it, was a concern, I guess, um, I'm sensing that's not really been resolved because I think your comment was. I have to figure out how to get that snow that does pile up out of there, uh, especially if it's heavy snow conditions, so. Is there a, is there still a concern there, or are we satisfied that snow removal uh under heavier snow um. Conditions is gonna be adequate enough to give us still the passage clearances that we need?
I'll start, and I'll, I'll probably pass off to Ryan here in a second, but yeah, with the twenty feet wide, as it was indicated, they can clear the snow. The the streets, the alleys will be clear, it should be a lot of snow deposited then at the end of the driveways. I mean, like, like there isn't any home, but um, there's just, you have longer, you have all these runs, you just have no place to. To tilt the blade a little bit on your areas that you don't have uh driveways that put a little extra snow there, this is all driveway. So there'll just be, there'll be a lot of snow in the long run, and then the, the HOA may have to follow up. Either dumping it in some of the common grounds that they own, pushing it all the way to there, or they may just have to haul it out, depending on the the amount of.
So we, that, those, so the alleyways, the city will clear?
It's a public, it's a public street, it's a public driveway, yes.
Okay. Closing comment, and I appreciate follow-up on the, whether the alleys will be lit or not. My son, who lives in very southern Georgia, Valdosta to be exact, lives in a community that has somewhat the same footprint. And I'm still. A tad concerned about the uh relative congestion and number of units and driveway side by side. But we're beyond that point, so I just wanted to register my concern. And I'm really hopeful that it will be successful with little, you know, minimal concerns in the dead of winter that we have. Um, I just, for whatever reason, I just wanted to say, I just am concerned about the, the uh density of this kind of development. But that's maybe more my personal problem than anything else. Okay, thanks.
That was, I mean, Dave, that was the. Concept of, was to have a more dense development in that area from years ago. I mean, the whole idea was to create. A, a dense walkable area that will have some commercial out there, will have.
Correct.
Like another, another little downtown, basically.
Correct, I, I can.
When the rest of the, when the rest of it's developed.
Yeah, on Thursday, I'd be happy to provide, I could bring in the uh, the entire rendering of the entire site, it is available online on that link in the staff report, but I could bring it in if you'd like to. Get another little review of it.
It's just creating a little bit different variety um of options. Um, I, you know, the, at the time that this was conceived. You know, there was a lot of concern that we have lots of neighborhoods where you just drive, and all you see is three garage doors and half the houses behind them. The garages, and um. And it was just, you know, it's just, it was, the idea was to create variety and other options. Uh, that, so the renderings you showed kind of showed the same color, but the idea is to have. Variety of colors, right, yeah, I think, I, yeah, I can imagine that that'll. Be really nice. Um, and they will have the. The stone and brick, I mean, is that?
There, there, there's options for all of them, um, they may change, try to find it right here. They all have a, a, an option of a masonry component to everything, but you may get some vertical siding versus horizontal, uh, you may get a little bit more brick. Up. Again, up the front, I mean, these are, I mean, so there's, there's all sorts of, there's all sorts of varieties that they can use, and mixing matching those options as they go forward. More or less brick, horizontal versus vertical, just to kind of change some, thicker trim, thinner trim, uh, you could take some pretty identical. Buildings and really alter them enough to, they have a unique appearance, even though they're kind of the same building.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dave, um, so are they all two, uh, two-story duplex?
Uh, they're all two-story duplexes, correct.
Okay.
You guys in three.
Uh, two-story duplexes, then you get into the two-story townhouse, which is fourplex, and then you get into that, I'm gonna call it kind of a pseudo-three-story uh fourplex as well.
Okay.
Have those exist anywhere in the, in the city, I don't.
Um, the closest example that these would be off of, by. Um, the closest example that these would be off of, by Linmore. Linmore would be a good one, uh kind of Al Wells built them.
The three-story.
There are three stories with the drive-in or garage um on the backside. They have a big deck on them. If you're right across from the high school.
Yeah.
What is that, thirty?
I know, I just, I guess I didn't realize those were three stories.
Well, they're, they're really a two-story from the front, but they, they illustrate very similar to this one on the backside. They look, there are three stories on the backside.
Yeah.
When you look at the elevation here in the lower, um, that is really the garage right there.
Yeah.
It, it all depends on how, how it's, how the slope on, how it goes back to the house. It might, it might not, it may not be a, looking like a three-story from the front of the road, depending on how the elevations work, but if they've got to get that depth, it may look a little higher, so.
Yeah. Sorry, the Bison Court, those apartments that are there, they're also.
They are, yes. Yeah, but they're, Bison Court, these would be off east of thirteen, uh kind of similar as well.
Steve, go ahead. Okay, so thi- this entire development is one, is it one HOA? One HOA is gonna cover this entire development?
Uh, that'd be, I, I'll have to find out for a hundred percent.
And that's a very large.
I think I've seen intent, but I'll verify.
I've just seen situations in the past that some HOAs can get too large and cumbersome and unmanageable.
Yep.
I mean, that's an awful lot to manage, so I don't know how. I've got a concern with all of that under one HOA, how they'll maybe get some feedback on how that is truly gonna be managed because that, once it's all built out, is one really large, large uh HOA. Uh, in, in your comments, there was a comment by staff that the applicant may not have provided enough variety to the development. And I don't think it pertains so much to the colors and that, but the design of the buildings, has that been rectified?
That had been rectified after planning and zoning commission with the addition of the porch option. Um, and then the color changes, that's, that's been addressed.
Okay, so that's been addressed?
Yep.
You made a comment earlier, if I recall it correctly, that each duplex has four parking spots. Two in the garage and two where?
Two in the driveway. So technically you can park.
In the alley?
No, 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 um.
We're off the, off the alley.
Oh, let's see if, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use, well, that's for example. Well, it's all have, they all, every unit out there has a two-stall garage.
Right.
And then the, the uh, the driveway with, driveway lengths that range from uh, I think it was eight.
Oh, so the driveway itself, then.
Correct.
The driveway is long enough to provide two spots and then the, at the. Uh, I got you.
And then in addition to the extra parking they provided for planning and zoning commission.
Okay, what about, was there a discussion at PNZ talking about the amount of green space that should be provided? One, one, I think, I think it, it was a good change to add some parking lots, as I would call it. Because if you have any group party or anything like that, I mean, it, it's gonna be a very cumbersome issue out there. So to me, that was a good change, because I hadn't seen it before, but when I looked at that, that made sense. But from the opposite, from the standpoint of green space, is that, how was that addressed? And do we feel this is adequate on what's presented in this large of a, of development?
Normally, I would say it's, it might not be enough, but the unique part about this, we have uh twenty acres of plus of school property uh to the west of the site.
Yeah.
Um, they'll have an elementary site on there as well, so you have a lot of, what kind of double, I, I don't want to, we didn't want to double up the green space necessarily. Uh, because the school have a lot of those facilities already built into their own future development. Uh, but they do have a playground proposed in this location, a dog park. You have a long lineal uh green space running along the, the rest of the property, and that was, there was no calculations or percentages of what is required for green space in our code. So again, staff, we looked at the best, best options for this site and was combining it with this future school site, utilizing a lot of their playfield, additional playgrounds that they're gonna have, along with some of the specific built uh open space on this site. And then unfortunately, the rest of that open space was being utilized by stormwater, so.
Okay, so I understand your comment about that. If this was not next to the school, having adequate green space, I would probably have a much stronger opinion about the design of this layout, and I'm sure that's exactly why their development number two is next to the school instead of development number one.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else, Dave?
Uh, to summarize, alley lights question, HOA question is what I heard to be answered.
Okay.
Okay.
Stay there, because we do have a question on, uh, we're going back. Grant has a question on A one under the regular agenda.
Sorry to rewind us here. So this was um specific to uh the pending amendment for the airport committee uh in subsection twelve dash seven point four A of chapter twelve of article seven of our ordinances. Um, where, as I just read that, and I, in the memo, and this is maybe, I'm just illuminating this for clarification prior to Thursday. It um says we're striking language that says the election for committee officer position shall be conducted by ballot.
Sorry, David, it's not you, but.
At the first meeting of each calendar year, and so I'm not worried about whether it's by ballot or not. But it seems we're striking a provision or a requirement that that committee's officers are not selected on an annual basis. So I, my, my only point is, I think it would be valuable for that committee to take that action on an annual basis.
So at the beginning of the statement, it says the committee shall choose annually at its first regular meeting, one of its members to have as chairperson.
You just, I need to get new glasses. I'm sorry for the rewind.
So really, we're only eliminating that by ballot.
All right.
Is the purpose of the language removed.
I'll be looking for uh Lasik surgery here forthwith, okay.
Council member, eh, this is because we've had such, multiple weeks in between council meetings, so.
All right, I, I'm sorry for the rewind, your honor and everybody.
Thanks, Dave. Okay. That brings us to the end of the agenda in the closed session.
Okay. All right. Your honor, I moved to adjourn to exempt session regarding, regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section twenty point one seven three of the Code of Iowa.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section twenty point one seven three of the Code of Iowa. Maybe have the legal counsel's statement?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, your honor, I uh have reviewed the subject matter of the closed session and believe that it falls within the requirements of Iowa Code, section twenty point one seven sub-three for an exempt session under Iowa law.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Okay, thank you for adjourned to closed session.